I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we are on to the minutes for September 4. I will make a motion to approve the minutes of September 4. And second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the September 4 minutes? Aye. Okay, 4-0. And September 4th, or September 18th.
Do you care about typos? Okay, just not worry about that. All right, under pledge of allegiance, second paragraph, special education results in. Okay, and then joint text in section 3, the last big sentence, it says I. And then space needs presentation, this will be the fourth, yeah, fourth sentence, it says some of the numbers were not accurate. I would like to put more information in that because it sounds like, let's not listen to the data. The only thing that wasn't accurate was that I was told it didn't include preschool. It would have been accurate, it should have been accurate. It was all based on reports. And that makes it sound like it wasn't accurate. Okay, so just say that maybe it didn't include preschool. Okay, then on the second page, under present space issues, where the primary student should be on first floor for all classes, it said music, art, show, and group library. Okay, then under the next paragraph, the row is the fifth sentence, it says a new four, I think that should be roof. Sorry, which one? It will be 1, 2, 3, go to the fifth sentence down, the first word says four, F-O-O-R. It should be roof. Okay. Then under public comments, Greg's comment, and then my response, it says 24 students, I said 21%. Not 24. Oh, I said 21? Yep. And then under, again, I think last talk then Greg talked again, and it says on the second sentence, new specialist to the Montego. That would free up three classrooms. I'm not really sure I understood that. Was that, do you guys remember what that means? And I didn't know what he meant by specialist. Because we only have one classroom that has specialists in it. So it's not going to free up three classrooms. The previous part, it says changes going down to music. Yeah, something changing to one music. So we're losing an act in that, or like, is what she's meaning by that. Okay, so I just don't remember that coming up at all. I don't know if anybody asked this, but. And I would omit the physical education required by law because we also have to have music and art too, right?
Well, two physical education in the classes a week, that is.
Okay, it doesn't say that then, so we should switch it to two physical education classes required by law. And I would just like to add something about moving the pre-K to the GBY. We have it here because the DCS, our DCS specialists are here. We also said that because it saves us a lot of money. So that was said during the meeting. So like, that's the attitude. Am I going too fast? No? Right, and that's all I have. That's all I have.
Okay, there was not a motion pending, so if you want to make a motion to
Okay, I moved that we make those changes to that. Sorry. As amended. I approved as amended.
Okay. Second. All right, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving as amended? Aye. All right, we are on to public comments.
Greg Whitmore, North Road. Halloween's coming, so you know why I'm here. So you may wonder why I make a big deal about this every year. But I really do think that students should be allowed to wear their Halloween costumes to school on Halloween. And, I mean, adults might not think it's a big deal, but the kids really do. It's a great way for them to express themselves. It's great memories for them to look back on. I know I've heard arguments that, well, they have other opportunities to dress up during the school year. We have special dress up days, you know, for this and that. Why not Halloween? I mean, the literal purpose of Halloween is for them to be able to dress up. So I think we're missing a really big opportunity for the kids. And I'd love to just see any sort of discussion about it, you know, before Halloween actually occurs, the pros and cons, and, you know, it's, it would be wonderful for them. That's my two cents on that. And strangely enough, just brought up preschool. Seven Church Street just came up for sale. And Seven Church Street used to house a preschool when we first moved to town. And it's no reason it certainly could not again. One floor for preschool, a couple other floors leased out to whatever businesses want to take them. We have a revenue stream coming in, so could the town and/or school look into purchasing this building and putting it to use? Food for thought. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
So I was very excited to see you guys, sorry, Margaret Whitmore, North Road. I typically can't make it to these meetings because I'm typically at board games myself on your side of the table. So I was very excited to be here tonight, and I know you guys are going over the special and fledge day. I have a lot of questions in regards to the special and fledge day. I don't know if I should ask them here. I know I emailed you, Kendra. My email didn't go to Patty. Yeah, it got kicked back to me. I didn't realize it until today. So I have questions that I emailed you all, and then I also have additional questions that I thought of before I got here. So I didn't know if, like, I should ask them now, ask them as we're going through the presentation.
I would say as we're going through, I know I also brought them to Jess.
Okay.
So that we could be prepared to answer them and I got through them. But yeah, we'll, we'll ask them questions.
Okay, that's what, that's what I was afraid of. I didn't want to give you, like, all of my stuff now because I was just like, it might be a move forward.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll work on that email. I just saw it, but.
Okay, no, I know, I know, and that's fine. So thank you. Thank you. Other public comments? Okay. We will move on to agenda review. We need to add a letter D for high school planning for the next school year. And we have one consent agenda item. And I think that is it. Review of correspondence, I don't think there was any correspondence to the entire board that would be included. We'll move on to the consent agenda. So we're not discussing the the bulk, we're not having the discussion about the request. It should, it was in the drive, if you had a chance to look at it. If anyone wants to make a motion to approve the employee request, we could do that. Otherwise, we can talk about it if the substance of it in non-public.
Will we talk about it in non-public if we don't make a motion?
No. We'll go into non-public if you want to talk about the request. We don't, I don't otherwise think we're going to go into non-public.
Right. Well, I guess I moved then that we'd talk about it.
Sure. That's fine. All right, on to media, media business. We first had the bus stop appeal. I don't, oh, Amy, I don't know if you're talking about this. There were two letters in the file during the drive about the request and also the response from Dale. How do you want to do this? I don't think Amanda is here.
She was invited, and I let her know that it would be on the agenda, and I did send an email, I let her know I shared an email with the board. So I didn't hear that she wasn't coming, but I didn't know that she was, you know. So you have her email about why she's requesting to add the stop, and then you have the response from Dale Transportation about why that was not putting a stop. If mom's not here, and you want to hear from Amy, she's here to represent Dale. But it's up to the score. We just feel bad with the board, so if you decide to add the stop, that's a motion you have to make. Typically taking into consideration what the company has to say first.
Does anyone want to hear of Dale, or does anyone?
It's not a different bus she wants the kids on, it's just a different stop.
It is a different bus.
It is a different bus as well.
And that I saw in that intersection.
Do you want more information? Well, I just get confused reading the email.
Do you want Amy to give you a summary?
Yeah, I would, yeah, I mean, I read through, and I read through Dale's things too, but I just, I didn't quite understand mom's email, I guess.
Right, so the kids normally would be taking purple bus. They take it in the morning. She's asking them to be put on white bus to create a stop. She started with 50 North Road, which is the empty garage with the chained off driveway. In her appeal, she stated 51, Kelly and I were looking at that. It was, it's the intersection of Meeting House, James City, and North Road. So we weren't very clear as to what house number she wanted us because there was no house at that 51 North Road. Kelly feels it's not a safe intersection because they're dropping off elementary students there to walk off. And you've got three different roads that are coming together right there.
So it's the, it's the white bus, and maybe she would be dropped off on North Road and not on?
Correct.
At a stop that's not?
At a stop that's not.
That's not a stop.
It's not a stop right now. We'd have to add that to the white bus. And I guess the children are walking up to the family friend's house, which is the red house that sits up. The actual driveway is on Meeting House, which in perspective, like, with the kids back on purple bus to be dropped off. She really doesn't want her children on the bus that long. Because we changed the routes based on logistics of the ridership. We can drop off 28 students in 10 minutes by going North Road first because the weight of the student ridership has shifted to that side of town where it used to be Meeting House and Old Center.
Okay. Is there a requirement by Dale that there be an adult meeting them at the bus stop under a certain?
Fourth grade, I believe, is the requirement that is Dale and the school have come to an agreement. So fourth grade and under need an adult.
And was there, would there be an adult at this?
There would not be there. Her oldest is eighth grade.
I see. And there's no other, because I think I saw somewhere that there had been younger kids also.
There were, and we don't know why they're no longer riding with the dying home children.
But would they be riding if we added this stop?
That is something I don't know what the families would do. The families pulled them and put them back on. I think they went back to pink bus based on their address. And to my understanding, dad was going to be home to be able to meet the bus. I mean, I haven't heard any issues otherwise with them no longer riding with the dying home children.
So basically, mom requested a stop, and Dale feels that it's an unsafe place to stop and drop off elementary school children.
We don't even have high school kids stopping there anymore. We choose the high school buses as well.
And also, students are going home on the bus that they come to school on. You know, they're not, that's, that's, there's, the buses are too packed to have kids going from one bus to another.
And I know from looking at the stops that Dale does try to do, the kids who were picked up first in the morning, dropped off.
Right, as Kelly stated in her
So you don't have two long routes.
Right. And as Kelly said in her letter, for years, it has been Meeting House because that's where it's been. And the North Road kids have really been shafted, so to speak, you know, for the, really since the pandemic. They've been first on and last off just based on, again, the ridership.
Yeah, so my personal view on this is that we would really be opening a can of worms if we were accommodating this just so that in the morning and afternoon, her children have short bus rides. When a lot of our kids have at least one long bus ride at one point. And I would just worry about setting a precedent of we are letting kids off at random intersections so that they don't have a long bus ride. Because I just, I don't know.
Well, and it's a dangerous intersection, there's no meeting. The problem there.
Right.
They would be walking home, though they're not going to
That is her choice to have her children walk.
Because at one point, it sounded like they went to this other house.
They were, and my understanding is, and maybe Kristi can confer, that the children are walking home from here along this intersection of 107. That's our understanding for mom. Because she doesn't want them on the purple bus for 45 minutes or however long it is. Because we do offer a bus that stops at her house.
So basically, the board needs to either take no action, and then the bus stops are as is, as they were previously approved. Or someone could make a motion to add this bus stop to the white route.
Right?
Yeah, it's probably better to have a motion dealing with the appeal, so if the board agrees, you vote yes.
Okay.
Don't listen to it, I don't know. In the affirmative, so approve the request.
Okay.
When the bus, I'm sorry, the bus leaves here.
So white bus turns right out of the driveway, and she does a section of North Road, and then she continues to Middle Road. So she does from like here to the lazy line, basically. And then orange bus picks up on the Raymond Road and does a section.
And white bus has a lot of students? I mean, is it?
They're all running around, 60, 65 students.
Okay.
And of us, we hold 77 students.
And 51 North, sorry, is on the opposite side.
Correct.
Of where Meeting House Hill actually goes.
Right, so where the garage is, there's a white house across the street, that is number 53.
Okay.
So backing up, 51 brings us to the intersection.
As I say, right by the bridge.
Right.
And that seems like a weird, I'm wondering why that is where this
Right, I don't know if it's a typo from her, or
Versus before you even get to
Correct.
Meeting House Hill. Stop there.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the request for a bus stop at 51 North Road.
To approve it?
We have to do a motion in the affirmative.
All right.
So if you do not want to support
I would not vote for it.
Do I have a second?
Do you need a second so we vote on that?
That would be best. If you had something in writing in emotions.
Okay, any further discussion?
I mean, I really get it in that not wanting to ride a bus forever if there is a way. But when you said, are we now opening up a can of worms for everybody that doesn't want to ride a bus for a long time? Yeah, that's the part, I, I just, I was like, sure, it goes that way anyway, just stop, let them off. But then again, then it is
I mean, I personally would maybe feel different if we had sidewalks or if Meeting House Hill wasn't a road that people were notoriously going very quickly down. But I don't think it's something that I can support at this point.
If they stay on their other bus, the long, the pink bus, does it drop them off like at their house?
Purple.
The purple bus, it stops at their house. But she's made the decision for them to walk from school rather than do that.
Correct.
And I believe somebody picks them up some, somewhere along the line. I, I think so.
That I don't know.
And this is eighth grader and second grader?
Yes.
Currently, yes. Their other family had a kindergartner and a fourth grader. There was a two, there were two families that were involved, but.
Okay, so we have a pending motion on the table. All in favor of approving a bus stop at 51 North Road? Okay, any who oppose?
Aye.
Did you vote Nancy? Are you abstaining?
Yes.
Okay. Zero, three, one. Okay. Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Okay. Public forum on special education budget day. So this sort of came about because, well, there's a lot of reasons, but, you know, as most of you know, there is going to be a tax increase, the bulk of which was because of special education increases last year. I think that there has been sort of historically, this, we don't talk about special education because we don't know what we can talk about, what we can't talk about. And I think, you know, my goal in doing this is to make it very clear what the school, what the obligation is in terms of providing and funding special education. We have to put all of this in our budget, we have to account for all of this. We also account for the anticipated revenue. And I've heard, you know, around town, people have a misconception that, like, special education is totally reimbursed by the state or federal government, and that is not true, unfortunately. So I want to, I invited Jess to help me with this presentation to give us an overview sort of of the laws of providing special education and give an overview of how it's funded. And give some examples, not real students. But sort of just to give you an example of how much the state would reimburse us for a particular student situation. I do want to be clear that I'm not doing this to try to stigmatize special education or place blame anywhere. I do want to explain because I think it is very confusing and mysterious. And so we're trying to do our best to explain this in a way that hopefully people can understand and, you know, participate in the budgeting discussions that are starting next meeting. So get excited. All right, hi, everybody. I am Jess Pickard, I'm the Assistant Superintendent Student Services for this SAU. Kendra sent me a pretty lengthy list of items that we wanted to cover for special education. So this really, as she stated, is, is hopefully a teaching and learning experience for everyone. There is a lot of information regarding law and rule and policy of why we have to do these things. I'm not, I'm going to try not to read word for word. You guys have copy of the handouts, you all hopefully read those thoroughly on your own time. But I will hit some key points, and then we'll have an opportunity for questions toward the end. So I will gladly answer any questions you have regarding special education. That we can process, means, broad overview. I cannot answer student-specific questions. And that will be a chance for you to ask those questions. I can address those questions that you had sent through email. Happy to address some of those as best I can. And then, so if you have questions as we go along, write them down so you don't lose them because we'll be the question thing. Because your question may get answered as we go through some of this information. Like I said, there is a lot of law language, so I'm going to try to break that down as much as possible. But certainly, if you need clarification on anything, let me know when we get to that question section. All right. The first slide is really a overview of why we have to do this. Overview of IDA 504 in New Hampshire Department of Education. It used to be called the DOE. They've changed that, it's now NED, N-H-E-D. They're referred to, so when you see NED on any of these slides, it's the DOE, it's the Department of Education. The IDEA is a federal law that mandates our special education rules that we have to follow because we receive federal funding from the government. So because we are an entity that receives grant money, reimbursements, any of those kind of things, we have to follow those rules from IDEA. That's why we have to do this. Same with 504. So Section 504 is kind of, I refer to it as special education's cousin, distant cousin. It guarantees civil rights and protections for all people with disabilities in institutions that receive federal funding. So again, some of our students with disabilities may have a 504 plan which guarantees them accommodations, not special education. And we have to follow those rules set by the federal government and the state because we receive federal financial dollars. The Department of Ed is in charge of providing oversight and implementation of our districts following those federal and state rules that are in place. The federal government has basically a baseline of special education and students with disabilities rules that we have to follow. And then the state can place a higher burden of expectation on the LEAs, the local school districts, on top of the federal laws that are in place from IDEA and Section 504. The state is required annually to produce a document that shows how they meet or exceed those federal standards. New Hampshire has not updated their requirements since 2020. So when this, this link will be out for the PowerPoint, you'll be able to click on that hot link that's down here where it says New Hampshire Standards in Excess. And that will take you to the chart that, and it's a several-page document that lists what the federal requirement is and then what New Hampshire requires either equally or on top of that. So there are several places, I believe it was around 20, 20 areas that New Hampshire requires more than what the federal government requires for special education. So just putting that out there. And our special educators and our coordinators and myself are all blessed with the task of knowing all those laws and having to implement them in your districts. Let's move on to the next slide. Percentage of identified students. So you'll hear me refer to students with disabilities, identified students, students with IDPs, that all means the same thing. So an identified student is a student who's identified as having an educational disability and that needs an IDP or specialized instruction services. So since 2001, the percentage of students identified with special education needs has increased across the state, not just one, one school, two schools across the state. Students with disabilities have been identified at a higher rate than they were 20 years ago. In 2001, 14.6% of students enrolled in New Hampshire public schools were identified with special education needs. In 2022, it was 19.1. So some of the information that we're going to go through, you'll see is a year or two lagging behind because the state puts out their numbers in a lag. So there's usually at least a year or two delay in getting some of this data from the state. So when you see me referring to 22, 23 numbers, that's why. Because the current 24 numbers aren't out yet from the state. So it's not that we're missing data, it just hasn't been reported out by the state yet. So in 2022, there was 19.1% of students enrolled in public schools that are identified with special needs. And as of this current December, or October 1st, yesterday, Deerfield has 21% of students that are identified pre-K through eight and then grades nine through 12 plus, and I'll get to that in a second, is 22%. Less than 1% of your student body is in out-of-district placements, and less than 1% are in charter schools that have special education needs. So when I say 12, nine through 12 plus, we are required by federal and state law to provide special education services for children three years old through 22. So it isn't just school-age children. It's toddler through early adulthood that we are required to provide special education to for identified students. So Deerfield's not too far off of that state average. I'd be curious to see where the current state average is because this, like I said, is a couple of years old. So the state average may be very likely up to that 21, 22%. Deerfield is probably right in the average. Preschool education. Uh, we are required, even though the students that are three to almost five, um, they're not required to be in our public schools or registered in a school. We are required to provide them special education if they qualify and meet criteria for that. So even though they may not be attending school here, we might be having to provide what we call outreach services. So providing an IEP, providing services in the daycare setting, providing services uh, in the home setting, providing services here in our preschool program. We're required by state and federal law to provide those services. Those children have a right to receive that and we have to provide it. We try as much as possible to hire our own staff to do that. So we're not having to contract out to provide those services. One of the other requirements that we have for our state law is that we are required to maintain as close to a 50/50 split between students that have disabilities and students that do not have disabilities in our preschool program. That's a requirement of the federal funding that we get and we have to maintain our programs as such. Um, so we might have 10 students, we might have 12 students identified that are in need of special education. Um, that means we have to have 10 or 12 students who are not identified attending our preschool program in order to make that program run.
And those children that are non-disabled peers in preschool, they, their parents have to pay for that?
Each preschool is different, so Deerfield, yes, they do pay for that. Other schools do not require families to pay for that. It's up to the district. I'll be unsure of everything. Come on, little guy. Uh-oh, I think our book, our clicker stopped.
Did you turn it off?
Maybe?
I do have some.
I did.
Okay. All right. So placements and least restrictive environment. So kind of shifting from what's required baseline special education to how do we make some of our team decisions regarding IEPs, placements, least restrictive environment? So placements are a mandatory part of special education. The team that is comprised of, has to be comprised of guardian parents, school personnel, and any providers that are pertinent to that child's programming. They have to come together and decide what the appropriate placement is for that child. Placement could be in the local school, so Deerfield Community School, or the team could decide that a placement outside of the district or a different school is in the best interest of that child. Um, there are several criteria that we have to review and consider when determining those placements. One of those things is called least restrictive environment. Um, and again, when this goes, when this PowerPoint, PowerPoint goes out to the community, you'll be able to click on these links and they take you right to the federal and state laws that govern how we make these decisions. So you'll see that, you know, this, our decisions have to be based on regulation. They can't just be willy-nilly because we want to do this or we think that school's got a cool program. Um, it really has to be based on federal state law. So least restrictive environment, um, is determined by, or is stated as educating a child um, who needs specialized instruction with non-disabled peers as much as possible. So there are requirements we have to consider with least restrictive environment that are established by federal and state law. One of those things is that we have to educate them with non-disabled peers as much as physically possible that that child is able to do. Um, another piece of that is that we are not allowed to remove them from the general education classroom and curriculum unless it's absolutely necessary for that child to receive instruction and services. We are required by law to keep them in those classrooms unless the team has decided that that's in the best interest of that child and least restrictive.
Um, and in terms of placements, any private placements or public placements are, have to go to um, places that have been approved by the New, the New Hampshire Department of Ed.
Yeah.
Um, and rates are set by the Department of Ed for private placements. I don't sure public too, but there is a list if anyone's curious about private placements. There's a list on, um, New Hampshire Ed website.
Um, the state sets those rates every three to five years depending on, um, cost of attending those schools and things like that. So, and that is all public information that's on the Department of Ed website. So you can go on under their Bureau of Special Education and Student Services and find any of those documents and information. At the end, you'll see a resources slide too, and it's got a ton of links and resources. Um, anyone can click and go find more information.
All right. Just real quick, when you say they set the rates, you mean they set the rates of what they will contribute for each of those?
Oh, sorry about that.
What they can charge for tuition.
So, yeah, and, um, when the state sets a rate, it's determining what that private school can charge a public school for tuition and attendance. So the state has say over how much, a school, say like Monarch School, Monarch School in England, um, where we have some students, um, going sometimes with special needs. The state tells them how much they can charge for tuition. And so, and that's what we have to budget for. So when we budget, we budget by what the state has told us their tuition rate is.
But it's not something we can negotiate or.
Correct.
You know, get at a different rate.
And then another caveat on that is that the state doesn't control what they charge for services. So they control what they charge for tuition, but the placements can charge whatever they need to charge for occupational therapy services, speech and language therapy services, nursing services, physical therapy, school psychologist, any of those things. Those placements can charge additional fees on top of tuition for any service that a student might need that's in their IEP.
I'll get to part of your question a little bit later.
Yeah, there's more. It's, it's long. Oh, I lost my train of thought. I was going to say something else with the funding pieces too. It'll, it'll, sorry. Um, so who is paying for this? So the districts, the LEA, when I say LEA, I'm referring to Deerfield Community School in this case. Um, the district is mandated to provide services by those federal and state laws that we were talking about. Um, however, the state does offer reimbursement, but it's only for a very small percentage of the cost that we have to spend. In 2023, the state and federal government paid only 17.47% of costs associated with IEPs across the state. So that number is not Deerfield specific. That's average across the state. But when we talk about reimbursements, grants, things like that, it only covered less than 18% of those costs in the state for special education. Um, how revenue is calculated? So the state again sets criteria for reimbursement for special education. So when we build our special education budgets, we build them based on what's actually in student IEPs. So we'll pull IEPs, we'll pull how many services a student is getting for speech, OT, psych, case managers, all of those things. We'll pull all those services. And then we will determine how many personnel we need based on those services for service hours, uh, report writing, all those things. Um, and then we build our budget based off of those needs. We then build in reimbursements that we anticipate getting based on the cost of what we are anticipating incurring. So the state sets the rate of what is three and a half times the estimated state average expenditure per pupil for the school year preceding the distribu-, year of distribution. So I go, that's a whole lot of blah blah. Okay? What it really means is that the state averages what it costs to educate a child in special education. They use that number and say three and a half times that number is the cap of what schools need to spend before reimbursement kicks in. There's also a second cap that's higher, that's 10 times that average expenditure, uh, where the state will pay for up to 100% after that second cap. The first cap, so we have to reach, or let me back up a little bit. The estimated cost per student in the state of New Hampshire that we have been told to use for this school year is $21,519.91. So the state is saying they think the average cost of special education for students in the state is going to be that $21,000 number. We multiply three and a half times that number and we get to $75,319.68. We have to spend $75,000 on one student in order to even apply for reimbursement of up to 80% after we spend that amount. We do not get reimbursed at all for the $75,000 you spend on one student. And it's not cumulative. It's per student based. So we do not get to apply for reimbursement as a collective group. We only get to re, apply for reimbursement per student cost. So one student may cost us $20,000 in special education services. Another student may cost us $500,000 depending on their need, placements, and all those things. We would not get to apply for reimbursement for the student that costs us $20,000, but we do get to apply for reimbursement for the student who costs us $500. But we only get reimbursed a portion of what we spent. And we're going to go into further detail in just a moment on that. The 10 times amount, you'll see down at the bottom here, is $215,199.10. And that's the 10 times what it costs to educate on average a student with special needs in the state of New Hampshire. Um, a little note that we have to keep in mind when we budget and we explain our budgets is that reimbursements don't come in until the following winter. So we apply for reimbursement at the end of the school year. We put together all of our books, our receipts, our invoices, all of that. We, uh, my admin assistant at the SAU, Julie, she does a great job. She puts it all together. She applies for reimbursement on that student. The state spends three or four months reviewing all that. And then we get a reimbursement check usually in December from the previous school year. So even though we spent all that money last year, we don't get reimbursed for those partial costs until next year. So something to consider as well. Who is paying for this? Part two. So another piece that we are able to get some reimbursement dollars for is if the court system places a child mandatorily, or mandatory. So sometimes what happens is a youth will end up in our court system through DCYF or through juvenile probation services. And the judge will say, we're mandating this child go to Monarch School District. Just because we talked about Monarch earlier, okay? If that happens and a judge orders a child to go to a placement, usually residentially, the school district has to pay for that. We do get to apply for, um, it's not really reimbursement. We get to stop paying for that service and placement once we hit a cap. Again, the state sets a cap or max amount that a district has to spend. And when a child gets placed through the court system, we only have to spend $59,740.98. That's still a lot of money. I say only because it's less than the previous amount that we just talked about. So if a student goes, goes through the court system, is placed by the court, we have to pay less than we do normally for our students on the other specialized aid list that we just talked about. And again, the state sets that number. We have no control over that. Um, and we have no say over where that student goes and what the judge does with that decision. Uh, when a judge makes that ruling, it's a final mandated ruling in the court system. Um, something else to just kind of keep in the back of our minds when we budget for special education. Um, I also budget for our students who qualify for McKinney-Vento. We talked about this last year during budget season a little bit. And this isn't necessarily special education, but it's a cost. So when we budget, we are mandated by federal law and state law again to provide services sometimes for our students who might be homeless or housing insecure. And we are governed and mandated to do this without, uh, resistance. We, we have to provide these services. Often, it's usually transportation because we have families who might be living in a campground, who might be couch surfing, um, who maybe have to go live with a relative temporarily um, due to unforeseen circumstances. And we are not permitted to deny them access and we have to remove barriers for their education. So we have to budget for those transportation numbers in our budget during this budget season.
So can I just give an example just to make sure I'm understanding it? So if somebody is in, say Deerfield, they lose their home, they have to go live at grandma's in Manchester. We have to provide best transportation to go get them in Manchester and bring them to the school.
Correct.
Okay.
And they, if they chose to enroll in Manchester, they could do that.
Yeah.
But we can't make them do that. They have a right to continue uninterrupted education here at Deerfield. All right. I'm going to hand it over to Kendra so I can get a drink.
So in the vein of who's paying for this, this is our budget breakdown by category that we presented last budget cycle, just a sort of an explanation of the various parts of our budget. So this, um, this shows 18% of our budget is student services, um, which includes ESOL and guidance. That does not include special education staff or transportation. If we include special education staff and transportation, it's about 30% of our budget. So just keeping in mind how big of a chunk of our budget is special education services. And we will learn in a little while how much of that is reimbursed, just to keep in mind.
All right. So I was tasked with creating example students of what an example student might cost the district. These example, these example four students are not real students. They are not based on any student in particular at Deerfield, just throwing that caveat out there. These are based on things I have experienced as a professional in special education over the last nearly two decades. So these are pulling from my experiences and what I know of budgeting when I create special ed budgets every year. Um, so student, and I kind of go, it's a gradient of expenditures here. I start with the, uh, least costly down to the most expensive. So student number one, uh, might be a student with a specific learning disability due to dyslexia and receives individualized services from a specialized reading teacher five times a week for 45 minutes each. If the billing rate for these services is $105 an hour, the total annual cost would be around $14,000 for that service for the whole school year for that student. And we would receive $0 in special education reimbursement because we did not reach $75,000 in expenditures for this one student. So we can't even apply to the state to get reimbursement for this child. The budget has to eat that and that goes in the bill to taxpayers in the year. Uh, student number two, example, uh, has an emotional disturbance and receives counseling two times a week for 30 minutes, specialized instruction in executive functioning and behavior, and has a shared para educator. The anticipated, uh, cost would likely be around $35,000 a year for the para for those services that we provide through that IEP. And would likely, we would receive $0 in special education reimbursement because again, we didn't reach that cap of $75,000. We have to spend that money in order to apply for reimbursement. Um, so the budget, again, would eat those costs. Student number three, example, uh, has another health impairment for Down syndrome and requires occupational therapy, speech and language services, a one-to-one para educator, physical therapy, specialized instruction in several areas, and specialized transportation. An expected total cost for the student could easily and reasonably be around $172,000 for all those services for one student. Um, as this is over, that three and a half times average cost to educate a student with special needs in the state, we would get to apply for reimbursement for some of those costs. We have to subtract the 172, we take 172 and we subtract that 75,000 from it. And we can apply for $77,000 in reimbursement because that's 80% of the total cost of that subtraction. So the state isn't going to pay for 100% of that after 75,000. They only pay for up to 80. Some years, we don't even get 80% reimbursement because too many schools apply for reimbursement. So the state is given a pool of money from the federal government to dish out to schools in the state for special education reimbursement. The state divvies that up between who applies for that reimbursement. So if five school districts apply for reimbursement, we might actually get 100% of that after 75% or at $75,000 covered and paid for by the state. However, it's a very, if it's a very heavy year and 65 school districts apply for reimbursement, we may only get 60% covered after $75,000. It just depends every year on who and how many school districts apply for that pool of money for reimbursement. It just depends every year on who and how many school districts apply for that pool of money for reimbursements. It's never a guarantee that we're going to get a set amount.
Jess, can I just mention, uh, this is the struggle that we have with the revenue. So when Amber does the budget and she does her revenue sheet, we're constantly talking about, and she's getting from Jess, we're guessing. So Jess can prepare, um, the spreadsheet with all the students and how much can be reimbursed for. We don't want to overestimate our revenue, so Amber will typically underestimate. And she might say, you know, "We know we could get up to eighty percent, but I'm going to only count on sixty because we know in some years that's all we have." So the revenue has a big impact on the budget and we try to estimate accordingly and be conservative with our revenue estimates.
And the state's really, does communicate, like, they give us a heads-up this year that we, we're not going to get a hundred percent covered. So we've been kind of spoiled the last couple of years. And we've got a hundred percent reimbursement after we spent seventy-five thousand dollars. We got a hundred percent reimbursed for anything after that. This year, the state has already given us a heads-up that that's not going to happen. They will be prorating and they are banking on less money being available to each school district for reimbursements after that seventy-five thousand dollar cutoff. Student number four, example, diagnosed with autism and emotional disturbance and is residentially placed. Uh, services are typically in addition to that tuition rate, like we talked about earlier, and are likely to be around five hundred thousand dollars. That's not unheard of, that a residential placement, meaning the student has to live at the school, because their disabilities are so significant, they are unable to live at home and access education. They have to live at the school, uh, in, in order to access their education. And sometimes that does happen. Um, and those placements are usually around a half a million dollars a year. Uh, we do get to apply for reimbursement, but we have to spend two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars before we get to apply for reimbursement. So we have to eat that two-hundred-and-fifteen in our budget. And then anything beyond that two-hundred-and-fifteen, we are guaranteed a hundred percent reimbursement from the state.
The next year.
The next school year.
So we're eating a half a million in this budget.
Correct.
And hopefully getting two hundred back next year.
Correct.
And they don't look at the seventy-five thousand cap and give you eighty percent up to two-hundred-and-fifteen.
You, you hit either cap.
Right.
Yeah, it's not a bulk. Yeah, uh, usually because if you're taking, if you're doing that eighty percent reimbursement, you aren't likely going to hit the two-fifteen, or you might hit it, but it might be just over by like a few thousand dollars. So it just depends. It's a numbers game. We, Julie watches that very closely at the SAU. And if she thinks we're going to be hitting that mark, she's prepping everything to apply for that hundred percent reimbursement. Um, if she thinks we're not going to get that, she'll prep everything for the eighty percent reimbursement.
Where's my chart?
Where's your chart?
Um, okay, so this is the exact same information that was presented on the slide before, but just in a visual way. So student number one, student number two, um, the costs are as such. And we don't get any reimbursement for those because they haven't hit the seventy-five thousand. Um, students three and students four, you can see sort of eyeball how much we get reimbursed from, or how much we can apply for reimbursement, it's not a guarantee to be reimbursed. So for these four example students, the district would expend approximately seven-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars. And we would be eligible to be reimbursed for three-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-one-forty-five. Property taxes would make up the difference, so we would include that in our budget. And that would go into the test, estimated tax impact. And then, as we said, reimbursement is not received until the following December. So the, the majority of the students, um, who receive special education services at, in Deerfield don't exceed the seventy-five thousand dollar threshold. So for the majority of students, we can't apply for any, um, reimbursement, um, from the state outside of IDEA and preschool.
Yep. So every year we do get, uh, a pool of money from the state through our IDEA grants. Um, Deerfield's grant this year is a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, one-hundred-and-fourteen and thirty-four cents. So that pool of money directly goes back as revenue at the end of the school year, the fiscal year. So we're not buying extra things with that grant, we're not doing anything special with it. It directly goes to offset the budget. So, but again, it's a very small portion of the special education budget. You've got a four-million-dollar special education budget and the state gives us a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars to offset that cost.
Uh, okay, so I pulled up the budget from last year that we went through and did some quick calculations of our, um, special education lines, including special transportation and staff, um, salaries and benefits, and not benefits actually, um, but paraprofessional salaries, et cetera. So we have roughly five million dollars, um, for those budget lines. The anticipated revenue from New Hampshire Department of Ed is seven-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand dollars, which is roughly fifteen percent of our special education. Services are covered by, um, state and federal aid. So you can see the various lines of revenue, including IDEA, preschool, um, there's a small preschool allocation, the differentiated aid, which is, um, correct me if I'm wrong about this, but so the state sets adequacy aid per pupil, but then they give differentiated aid for students with an IEP. And I think that's roughly three or four thousand dollars per student.
A little less, but yeah.
Okay. That's why I use roughly.
Yeah, 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 you're right, you're right.
Um, and then the catastrophic aid is that eighty or a hundred percent after you hit the caps. So you can see our anticipated revenue for catastrophic aid is two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand.
Uh, so just to really kind of put this in an umbrella, okay? We, we set our budget, we have those expenditures. Deerfield had nearly a five-million-dollar, uh, budget for special education. The state gives us three pockets of money for special education. IDEA grant, the special education differentiated aid, and or catastrophic, which used to be called catastrophic aid, but is now special education aid. Those three pockets of money we do get reimbursement for, or monies from the state. However, you can see they are extremely small compared to what we actually spend on special education. So there is a very big, um, error in thinking and knowledge that is being shared in the community that specialized aid covers the cost of special education. It does not. It covers a very, very small portion of special education services.
And then, you know, just for an example, last year when we had the frozen budget, that was largely because we had unexpected expenditures that we weren't going to get any reimbursement from until this year. Um, so we have to, when those costs come up, make up for them somewhere in the budget. Um, and so we had to freeze everything last year so that we could cover those costs.
Okay, so the teacher salaries, is that the specialized teachers?
Yes, just special education. Anytime, so you can see the line numbers. Anytime you see twelve-hundred, that means special education.
Yeah, so the paras too, there is a separate para line that's not specialized.
And the, um, summer and regular transportation that Kendra was just talking about, you can see transportation all has a different line number. And the special education one is twenty-seven, twenty-two. So that, that's how we keep track of what money goes where, is those line numbers. And we are only able to spend items related to special education in those twelve-hundred and twenty-seven, twenty-two lines. We cannot spend money for GenEd out of those lines, just only special education, that's it. So students with 504s who are not in special education, we do not get to spend any of these dollars for those students that are in, that receive 504 plans. That comes out of the general budget, not the special education budget.
Can I ask a question? I know, but I just want to say, I think that this budget that you have up there is a little bit under what the actual is. You have the salaries up there, you do not have the benefits of social security retirement. So I just want to say, so that is actually a lot more than what you're presenting.
Uh, we got, we put this together in like two days.
I know, I did, I did specifically this morning.
So we really tried to get as much as we could.
I know what the benefits are, so I'm looking at that number and I thought it was high, and then I'm like, oh no, it's a lot higher.
Those are not broken out in our budget, so it wasn't something I could easily figure out.
No, that would be a request to HR to pull all that.
So that's in a different line item.
Yeah, yeah.
So the, like, the retirement for teachers is just one big amount.
But it's also a thing. You can't apply for reimbursement for staff salaries anyway, for benefits. So you are required to have, to provide these services, but you can't use their, part of their salary to get reimbursed. You can bill for services, but not for their salaries and benefits.
All right, findings from the New Hampshire Commission to Study School Funding. So there's been a group for several years now who have gone out and collected data and really talked about the cost of, uh, education and special education in the state of New Hampshire. And this is where this data is coming from. So the Commission to Study School Funding actually pooled actual costs from the state regarding special education. Um, and they determined that actually students with a disability, on average, cost between thirty thousand and forty-five thousand per year to educate in the state of New Hampshire. Not necessarily the twenty thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars that the state, uh, set as the average for the state. Uh, Deerfield last school year, uh, cost around thirty-three thousand dollars per student for special education. Do you want to hit anything else on this?
Um, there's just some interesting statistics, I think they're on the handout, um, the other handout that was there. But basically that, um, this, the, the study found that districts with higher special education rates, um, don't perform as well on, um, state exams and that, that they, and that smaller districts tend to, tend to spend more for students than larger districts. Um, yeah, it's all in the, the second handout from, that Jess provided.
Statewide data, so state and federal government paid, we talked about this earlier at the beginning, seventeen-point-four-seven percent of costs associated with special education in the year, uh, 2023. In 2023, sixty New Hampshire public school districts spent over twenty-five percent of their total expenditures on students with disabilities and IEP expenses. The average additional cost to educate one student with an IEP in New Hampshire was twenty-nine-thousand-five-hundred-fifty-six dollars in 2023. Uh, the state contributes on average three thousand dollars per student with an IEP, uh, which is only ten-point-four-seven percent of the actual cost that it takes to educate a student with a disability. So that's that extra adequacy cost that we were talking about earlier. The state gives each school district an additional three thousand dollars on top of adequacy aid, which
Four thousand.
Adequacy was four thousand, so you, we get allocated seven thousand dollars for a student that has a disability.
When that, when the average cost at least in Deerfield was thirty-three thousand.
Right. Um, catastrophic aid, which is now special education aid, is only three-point-seven percent of the total funding for disability services in New Hampshire's public school system. Um, out-of-district placements and out of, outside service providers' costs, uh, rise approximately five percent annually. So when we, when I budget, and when Lisa and I sit down and budget together, uh, we anticipate costs of providers, so if we have a student in an out-of-district placement that's getting services, or our students here that were having to contract with services more, we anticipate those costs going up about five percent every year. Sometimes it's more, sometimes it's less, but we budget for five percent. Because we just don't know how they're going to raise their rates every year because they're private businesses.
So we, I wanted to include some of the statewide data to show that unfortunately, this is not a unique Deerfield problem. This is a situation across the entire state that every school district is trying to figure out how to pay for when it comes to budget season.
Um, I'm going to come right back to questions, but I just want to show you that in the end, I'm not going to read through any of these, but in the end, uh, we have some information for those that are curious on state statute and federal law of where and why we have to do this. We are required to do these things for our kids, and we should, but we're required to, we're mandated by law. So, um, information on fake extended school year, residential placement. And then there's a list of resources at the end that are actual resources from the state and federal governments and other agencies that pull data or have international McKinney-Vento law that I talked about, section 504 law, civil rights is in there. Any of those resources that we talked about, they're all in the back. All right, hit me. Do you want to start? Because I know you're burning with a couple.
Well, I feel, I feel like most of my questions, I kind of emailed you guys anyway, so I guess I'll wait for that. I just realized who you are, you're Bob's daughter.
I am Bob's daughter, another Bob.
What a great Bob.
How do you know Bob?
I worked in Ringwood.
Okay.
I still work there.
Wait, and was it a good thing I'm related to Bob? We're in-laws, not blood.
No, that's okay, I didn't have, I didn't really have a problem with Bob. I try not to have a problem with anybody.
Um, so I guess one of my biggest questions is, is I had noticed, and I, I follow the budget. I saw you guys move last year a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars from a couple of lines to contracted services line, right? So, but it still went up by three-hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
So I'm just wondering, so I can see maybe that was because of the pandemic, possibly. Um, but if you're anything like the district I'm working in, like, we have a lot of SELs, a lot of BCBAs, a lot of OTs, PTs, you know, everything. Um, but what we've been trying to do lately is that the contracted services are kind of like price gouging us a little bit.
Yep.
So have you guys thought about hiring those personnel in-house to possibly relieve that a little bit?
Absolutely.
I know a lot of people aren't that big a fans of it because then it adds it to the budget and then it's going to be there forever. But I'm thinking if we can save twenty-five, thirty dollars for each one of those positions, and not only that, but we have those people in our building every day, we get the consistency with the students, everybody builds a great reputation together. And you don't have to worry about contractor coming in for two weeks and then leaving and then getting another one used to everything going on in the building.
Yep.
So some of the contracted services, I think, are high school, or are those all in special placements?
Yeah, some of them are high school.
Right, so we don't have control of high school.
Correct. So I can tell you a couple things, so there's pieces, there's multiple pieces to that question, uh, that you posed. So one, yes, we, every year, Lisa and I sit together and we go through what outside providers we have and if we can move them internally. Sometimes, um, we, we had an example of this this summer. We posted for a school psychologist for months and months and months, they got no one, no applicants. We tried several different avenues, I called many people that I know and nobody. It's a part-time school psych physician, it's a point eight, not a full-time. And it's very difficult to find part-time professionals because they want full-time work. Um, and so we ended up having to contract out with an outside agency to get our school psychologist because we had no other option and we had IEPs that we had to meet. So often we are faced with that circumstance where we have a part-time position that needs to be filled, but can't fill it because we have no applicants. Um, and we have reached out to do more mainstream application or hiring processes, not just through our frontline system. We're, we're on Indeed, I go look at ZipRecruiter, I go look at all those apps and websites that are popular to try and find professionals to service our kids. And the only time we contract out is when we can't hire internally. So when you see we're contracting out with a provider, it's because we've exhausted our internal options to do that. And then we are forced to face the situation where we have to contract out. We do, and I, all of our contracted providers know that their contract could end any given year or any given time during the year with advance notice. If we had somebody show up who could cover an SLP that we have to contract out, we will give notice to that, um, outside contractor and we will likely shift over to an in-house person. So it's fluid, it can change at any given time and any given year. Um, and I'm not joking, that we go through service by service for kids and that's how we hire. So when we put someone in the budget, they don't perpetually live there because we budget based on what's in our IEPs. Um, we are often faced with a situation where the student's with us for eight years, right? Or nine years, if they're ten years, if they're in preschool. And so it feels like they live in there forever because maybe it's a nursing service. Maybe it's, you know, a one-to-one and that child has to have one-to-one. Maybe it's, you know, a one-to-one and that child has to have one-to-one attention for safety or medical reasons all ten years. And so it feels like it perpetually lives there, but really it's the length of the time that the kid's here. The contracted services going up was only due to specialized services that were needed for a few kids. It was not because of any combination of outside providers, things like that. I mean, it was outside providers that cost that amount of money, but it was because the student needed that for medical reasons. Or students needed that for medical reasons. So in the services that we had to hire in were about eighty-five thousand dollars apiece. And that's on the low end.
Jess, can I just, for contracted services too, in that trip you've ever heard us talk about the fact that we hire employees by the SAU to, to save money. So we might hire a full-time school psychologist. That's not Deerfield right now. And then, you know, five schools may need one day a week and that's in the contracted services budget, but it's only contracted because we hired them at the SAU under an umbrella and then we can send them out to the schools and save money and not have to hire an agency to provide.
Yes, ESOL, you do that with that, right?
Yes, we do that with, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I did review the SAU budget for a while.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Because I just saw that that was there and I'm like, oh, that's great, but maybe I'll be there next week.
So I don't ever have Deerfield people there.
I have twenty-five certified professionals that I've hired through the SAU that do just that. So we don't have to contract out with like a Booty or a Pro Care or any of those agencies. So, and not that they're not lovely, they are lovely agencies. They provide us things that we can't find.
Right.
But we can't find them because they hired them. So it's a double-edged sword. And you know, I think sometimes those agencies are a little bit more lucrative because they're private industry. They're not paid through tax dollars. And so they can pay their employees, they can set their rate. Whatever they need to pay their employees, they pay them because schools have to pay them.
Right.
Right, so they have us between a rock and a hard place. And we are forced to pay those higher prices because we can't hire those individuals because they make more at those private industry places. So it, it really puts schools at a disadvantage where we're forced to contract with those people sometimes. But we do, I have, I have twenty-five certified employees that are under those umbrella contracts because schools need part-time services. And so we're, we've got OTs all over the place, we've got speech pass all over the place, school sites, ESOL. We have these certified people all over in the districts because you're paying a portion of the cost instead of a whole salary off.
I would say, I, one thing that came to mind was space. We just did this presentation last time, so to the extent we wanted to hire people, I don't know where we would even put specialists at this point.
Right, we had to put a school psychologist at the top of the stairs.
Right.
Cut a hole in the door, so we had a spot for her. Well, and to talk about, so there was a discussion around preschool, okay, throwing preschool out there. We, you know, for the other four districts in the SAU, they have collaborated with a joint preschool program to save those costs. Because they, none of them solo had enough to fill a full preschool program. So they collaborated together. They are renting a building separate from a school because it doesn't live in any one of those schools. So things like that are possible. It just takes sometimes a couple of years of planning to do that. Because you're talking about rental agreements, purchase and sales agreements, they're messy, I'm going through them right now. But those things can happen and then we combine services to save costs overall. Yes, it is a big expenditure, but in the long run, it ends up being more cost-effective. So those things are possible. We, we can smoosh things together. Deerfield has a self-sustaining preschool program because they have the numbers. Whereas some of the other districts, you know. I don't know if I hit all of your points.
I'm good.
Okay, all right.
I don't, so I have this question, I don't, I think anybody's going to have it, but I'll put it out there anyway. I was wondering how much is in the special capital reserve fund because I'm assuming it's underfunded. So something to think about.
It's not bad.
Yeah, Deerfield I don't think is in bad shape.
I want to say it's over three, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to put that out there. Typically they're underfunded, you know, and I'm just thinking, you know, is there a recommendation of what should be in there? Cause I know an out of district placement can go anywhere from a hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I would say on average, our out of district placements are costing us about one-twenty.
Okay.
And so I think if you have three hundred in there, that gives you a buffer of two regular out of district placements. But if you have, if we had to cover a residential placement, it's not enough. Because a residential placement is usually around five hundred thousand. So if, in a perfect world, you'd, you'd have five hundred thousand in there. You wouldn't need more than that, but in a perfect world, you'd have five because it would cover a residential placement.
I'm actually happy with the answer because I thought it was going to be lower than that.
No, you guys are in okay shape.
Unless they have the unassigned funded, the unassigned fund balance.
Yeah, we did think we were going to have to exhaust our special ed budget, our trust last school year because of the whole situation that happened last year. Fortunately, there was some unexpected revenue from the state that we were, but again, we can't really budget for that because we never know how much revenue we're going to get. So there was some surprise revenue that we didn't have to tap into that trust fund. But that was a big concern that we would have to tap into the trust fund and our emergency reserves.
Well, I think we were, a lot of districts were using up the SR funds too. And so that was a big protection, but that's exhausted now. And so if we were in a situation like that again, we likely would have to tap into one of the, the trust funds.
Right.
Part of the reason you didn't have to tap into it too is because you froze, yes, the budget.
In like October.
The right time, yeah. The budget that froze. So.
Been a whole year.
I get it. I did the same thing last year because we were expecting to be a million over on special ed. So I get it.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
And then I'll email you guys my updated questions.
Yeah, fair question. Other questions? I know that you, you're dying to ask questions.
Any, nothing is a bad, a bad question and
I talk to Jess about bad questions all the time and she always humorous.
If any, any question you have, I can do my best to answer.
And we can, I mean, we just gave a lot of impressions. So after digesting and reviewing the handout, people are more than welcome to email Jess.
Please, you know, it's fine. No, it's fine. And this is not, the purpose of this presentation is not to prepare you for doom and gloom. We have no anticipation of a doom and gloom specialized budget being presented. This is just an information session because many of these questions came up last year. And we were, I was answering questions and doing information sessions on the fly, trying to be a little bit more proactive this year and give you the information ahead of time because we know this is information that people don't know. You don't know what you don't know and unless you've gone to school for this and been trained in it, you have no idea all the federal and state laws that are tied behind all this that we have to do.
Well, after joining the board, I called Jess and said, can we meet? Because even after teaching here for thirty-eight years, I didn't have anything to do with that part of it. And then, so I had my own private one-on-one and left like, so I know what you're probably feeling like right now. And then I, after digesting, I asked clarifying. So do, because it is a lot of information, but it's important information for people to know because it comes up at deliberative session, it comes up at things and if you don't understand.
And there are no secrets with it. The only secrets are the student's personal information. I can't share with you, if we have one kid going to a certain placement or one kid in a residential placement, I can't tell you that. Because then it's identifiable of who that child is. I, for safety reasons, I say if there's anything less than seven, I don't share it. Because I want, I have an obligation to protect that child's rights and that child has a right to privacy and not having the public know their private information. Anything else, I can answer.
I just want to say I appreciate, I don't know if I can talk about that, but I appreciate you giving this presentation. I think it's so enlightening and it is so much information and so, there's so many interesting things.
Wait till you start clicking. There's many rabbit holes.
So just, just, even though I already know the answer, just to say it out loud. So like our, you know, when things come up in the town about how much money the school is costing the town and people talk about reducing the amount that they want to go to the school, we still have to pay these costs no matter what.
Correct.
So all we're doing is taking money away from the rest of the school.
So if you, so say for instance, all, Pembroke is an example, public knowledge. Last year Pembroke had a three million dollar budget cut. You can't take that from special ed because the special ed budget is built off direct services from those IEPs. There's no fluff. It's literally service by service. We go through and assign personnel and services based on actual hours of delivery needed for instruction. There is no extra bodies or providers to fluff the budget. Special education is based on those IEPs. And so when there's a three million dollar budget cut, that's gen ed, that's all kids that get impacted, not special ed. So no matter what you cut from your budget, it's not cutting special ed. Even if you did cut a special ed line, we still have to pay for that no matter what. So we overexpend the line because we are legally obligated to do that.
So even if what like numbers come up and people are like, there's so many more teachers or something, why do we have so many more? And they want to cut teachers, it will only come from the gen ed teachers.
You got it, you're cutting classroom teachers, that's it, not special ed teacher. Correct.
So when you're looking at the proposed budget and the default budget, for the most part, those specialized budgets, they get moved over.
Correct.
Because no matter what, they need those in the default and the operating because they're contractual, they're contracted.
Yep.
And does that carry over into space requirements too? Or, I mean, I know there's ADA.
Sometimes, yeah, sometimes, you know, really it's, we look at the service providers. Again, we look at those IEPs and we say, all right, do we have a group of students who has to have pull-out instruction versus pushing in? So we try our hardest in what's called least restrictive environment to provide special education in the classroom setting. Sometimes we can't because of the type of service, maybe the student's disability, maybe they're very loud. Maybe they need to get up and move and like use fidgets that are noisy and things like that to get that service. So we can't do that in the classroom, it's very distracting to other kids. And maybe embarrassing for that kid in front of other kids. So we, we consider that. And if we need two separate spaces to deliver special education services, that goes into those space needs. Sometimes we do need it, sometimes we don't need it. But that's why we look at the IEPs every year to determine what those needs are.
And for, if I can add to the, the space question, Jackie, we work as an SAU too. I mean, there's a benefit, it's sometimes for us, it's not great having seven schools to deal with. But in, you know, when we all pool our resources together, this year the principal, we had an alternative middle school and the principals got together and said, our issues are not middle school right now, they're, it's primary. And special ed principals, all of us worked together, begged for a space somewhere. Epsom said, I got some space for a room. And now each district is having, you know, when they need it, we can send an elementary kiddo to Epsom at a much cheaper rate than we could if we had to send that student out of district. And we can get them back and forth and be here as much as possible. If, but space is an issue. If we don't have space, there are programs we could do in this school that we don't have space for. And we, the only other alternative is to send the students to a specialized program.
Yeah, we've had, we've had conversations about wanting and potentially needing like a specialized like life skills program for our students who might be on the spectrum, things like that, who really need daily living skills. We don't have space to create that environment within this school. So if we have a child whose needs can't be met here, we're looking at places like Seacoast Collaborative, Monarch, Spalding, those kinds of things because we don't have a room that we can provide that program in because we're utilizing it for other things. So there, there is some give and take and sometimes we can meet their needs here, sometimes we can't. And it really is so unpredictable because you could have a family move in midway through the year. A kid comes in who's in a placement. We, and they have a right, when they join in midway through the year, we cannot change that placement. That is their right to stay in that placement until the end of the school year. Then we can relook at whether they need to come to Deerfield or not. But that happens, we have kids move in all the time. And kids move out too. So sometimes kids move out and we, you know, that's how we ended up saving some money. Last year is we had some families move out that, that opened up some money that was available to cover the expenditures that we had for other kids. So sometimes that happens. And we're trying to budget eighteen months in advance, you know, it's, it, it's a wild deck of cards. I mean, you, you plan for what you have now because that's all we can do. So we don't, we don't have an, an emergency line that we put extra in to plan for a move-in. We only budget for the kids we currently have and the IEPs that we currently have. So if somebody moves in, it could totally send our budget into the dumpster. It needs a lot of services.
Which is part of another conversation of the inequity in the state of school funding. Because it shouldn't hurt one community just because a family decides they want to move up a sales.
Right.
So much inequity.
And, you know, obviously we've talked a lot about like laws and the requirements from the federal and state government. If we were, we, I, we would not do this. But if we were to say, we're actually going to cut the special education line and we're not going to provide these services because we just don't, we don't want to. Then we get sued.
Right.
They, I mean, they appeal through the New Hampshire Department of Ed. They can file a civil rights violation if we're violating section five oh four. It would cost more money than providing services.
And we'd lose our funding.
Right, so. So there's like very big consequences of not following the law. So we do our best to, at every turn, try to provide the services that, that the students need.
I think it's expensive, there's no way around it. I mean, there's no hiding that, five, five million dollars is an extreme amount of money.
It's bigger than the town's whole budget. And that's accounting for twenty-one percent of our students. So it's a lot. And I, you know, we're all going to hear about it when the tax bills come out. So if you hear things, direct them to us so we can help explain sort of how, how we got here and, you know, what sort of things we have discretion on or which we don't.
And we're going to share this out all over the place and feel free to share it yourselves.
And if you hear the misinformation around how much we get funded from state.
Fifteen percent.
You can hand them this and say you're wrong. That is not accurate. So we, we do not get our special education costs covered, as you clearly saw. And this is all, it's all public information. So you can go on any of those links and find this information right from the Department of Education. It, it's just, it's facts, it is what it is.
Thank you, Jess.
Oh, yes.
So you said that the state already told you that they, they had a smaller pot to, to give you money from? So where does that money come from and why is it less?
So they, the state gets a budget from the federal government. So the federal government issues the state in New Hampshire, in every state, a pot of money for IDEA, for special education. The state has their own budget they create, just like we do. And some of that goes for specialized reimbursements, some of it goes for IDEA grants and then some of it goes for their own initiatives, like professional development for educators, for their own budgets that they have for special projects. So they have to take that pot of money, create a budget, which is all public, it's public information on their website. And then they let districts know, okay, here's, this is the pot of money here, this is the pot of money here, here's the pot of money here. So our pot of money for special ed reimbursements isn't necessarily less this year. It's that schools are already applying for more money. So they're anticipating schools asking for more reimbursements because the cost of everything is going up. So the costs of placements are going up, the costs of services are going up, transportation is going up exponentially. And so they are already anticipating that more schools are going to apply for larger pots of money because you're going to have more schools reach that seventy-five thousand dollar cap quicker than they have before. And so they are already giving us a heads up that they are not going to fund a hundred percent of the money that we spend beyond seventy-five thousand dollars. The last couple of years, we've gotten lucky and recouped a larger chunk of that money beyond that seventy-five thousand dollars. But they are just giving us the heads up that that's likely not going to happen because they, they are anticipating having to prorate that amount of reimbursement. They might have gotten a little less than the feds, I just, I don't remember the number, so I can't speak to it. But I know it's, I know it's on my website.
Lisa, do you have anything to add? Were we, were we accurate?
No, I think that was an excellent overview. You know, and when there are opportunities to reduce staff, you got it based on IEPs or
And we've done it.
We have.
Yeah.
I mean, over the years I have tried to be as physically responsible as possible and minimize, you know, but we can't minimize them very far, so.
Cool.
Thank you, Jess.
No one talks about specialized.
I personally haven't because I saw how much work it is.
Because I saw how much work it is.
I basically last week was like, hi, Jen, we need this for Wednesday.
Okay, so we will move on to the New Hampshire School. You are welcome to say.
We don't have to.
The New Hampshire School Board resolutions. When is the meeting?
The 19th.
Okay. I looked at the meeting and I said, we must talk about this.
Yes. Yeah, I was, I was actually, like, moving. And I go, yeah. I mean, we, we could postpone for two weeks if everybody wanted more time to read it. Saturday after, but probably at least get some.
Yeah, everyone's ready. It would be great to get Ellen that correction. Yeah.
Oh, good. So Ellen is our delegate to the New Hampshire School Board Association Delegate Assembly, October 19th. So basically, as I understand, I've never been, but school boards can submit resolutions. And then people sending a delegate can, can vote. So this board can vote on whether we approve or not approve the resolutions. And then Ellen will vote on our... So yeah, these are all the resolutions that school boards have submitted, which is a lot of them. They were in the drive, so hopefully everyone got to read through all of them. And it's helpful at the end because the School Board Association Board of Directors weighs in on whether they support this or not and why. So that's helpful guidance for boards because if you just read them on their face, it might be hard to, you know.
There's a lot of context.
Yes, that's, we don't necessarily have. And sometimes they point out that they believe there's already a law to support some things, so you don't need to support this. Sometimes they offer amendments. So like Kendra explained, you just need to go through and vote on whether you support the resolution or not. And then Ellen will cast your vote when she does.
What I don't understand about this is what happens to the resolutions.
They can be adopted or not.
Okay.
Yeah, so it becomes one of the School Board Association resolutions. Sometimes it's just like taking a stand on something. Or sometimes it's getting a directive to the School Board Association to advocate on an issue.
Got it.
Okay. Does it start at 13?
Yes.
Okay.
The others are already resolutions. These are proposed.
Got it. Um, okay. So number 13. This is, um...
I'll tell you where it's coming from, from the number of school boards.
So this one, the School Board Association believes is already similar to a resolution that they have. So they, the School Board Association has proposed a, a different version, an alternate resolution. So we can decide to support or not support the proposed resolution or the alternative.
Right.
And they just, so if you look at the alternate resolution, they added that line.
Yep. Do we need motion?
Yes. Right.
Well, Ellen needs direction other than... Yeah, I need to know that you all agree with it. I move that we support the alternative resolution, recommend it.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of, of...
Alternative.
Alternative Resolution Number 13. Say aye.
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 Okay, are you abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. We also, I mean, we could technically vote on these next week. Because there is one more.
Yep.
Because it's Saturday after the next meeting.
That will be a busy meeting just because we are starting.
Budget!
Building budget and... Everybody would have to be totally prepared. You'd have to read it and know exactly what you want to do. And then we have a quick discussion and vote if we were to do it the next time.
What would board like to do?
I won't be at the next one.
So you want to vote now?
No.
Well, can I send my email, your...
I can't email.
No. So no more, I can't do that. I used to say you can't do that. I know.
Can only take official business out of meeting.
Right.
Well. It doesn't, I mean, I did read through them.
You could, she could send her comments though.
You can have your comments read.
Oh, wow, yes.
So that, yeah. Okay, are you feeling like, are you feeling like you're not wanting to do it today?
Oh, I don't have any. I just, I didn't know what...
No, I have not read this.
Yeah.
So not resisting it.
Yeah, I mean, so, so this is among the materials that are in the drive in advance of the meeting. So I hesitate to postpone it. But we can if the board would like to.
We should have Nate next.
Yes. What would you like to do, delegate?
I'm okay either way, so. I mean, I've read through them, but... I, I usually find that their recommendation, I usually agree with their recommendation, I have to say. Not always. There have been times when I don't though.
I agree. I don't know. Am I inclined to just move forward so that we don't? I just, I mean, this is a long meeting too, but, um... What, what do you think, Patty? What do you, what, tell me what to do. Tell me what to do.
I mean, you're, it was, it was on the agenda. The materials were available. So if you wait, you're going to lose Nancy. So you're going to gain, well, I mean, it's...
But you'll gain Nate. Well, let's look at the second one.
Okay.
So basically, they're saying that the School Board Association was sure that the member dues are not being used for lobbying purposes consistent with our sake. And then they feel that that's not recommended because it's not appropriate for a resolution.
Yeah, and there's not an ability to segregate the funds for the NHSBA.
Right, so they're basically saying it's kind of a move.
Yeah.
So I would move that we agree with them that we don't recommend it.
Do we have to do affirmative motion?
It's a good idea to do that. So I would support, I would say you should recommend the, you should, oh, agree with the School Board Association recommendation.
Okay.
That way it's an introduction.
Do you want to change your motion?
I'm sorry, I wouldn't. So you would, that's okay, you would agree with the NHSBA response.
Okay, so that's what I should recommend. All right, so I move that we agree with the NHSBA response.
Second.
So when it says they don't want to use for, to lobby with, but you said they don't separate out their money.
They collect dues and it goes for every service they provide.
So they just take their chunk of money and say, I have this to do, I have this to do, I have this to do.
Right, like they'll come here and do a presentation to us about, I don't remember if we did that when you were...
And I mean, and some of the...
But the role of the school board.
But some of the resolutions are to lobby.
Correct, things too. So, so to separate it out seems kind of crazy. It is a big function of the NHSBA
Right.
to go to the State House and advocate on behalf of the School Board Association. Um, yes. Okay, all in favor of approving the NHSBA recommendation for number 14?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Um...
301 again?
I said aye.
Um, 15 was proposed by Governor Wenworth School Board. And it is related to viable sustainable permanent funding to provide a school breakfast and lunch at no cost to students. NHSBA says this is, um, it's not a proposed resolution. So supports, and supports the idea that, right, and there are some more.
Right, I think three there. There's, yeah, as they said, if number two, the continuing resolution number two passes, it will be permanent.
So, but do we think anything on that?
I think they're basically saying it's not a resolution.
Okay, 16 submitted by the Congress School Board. This one is very similar regarding universal free lunch. Same thing. There, so the continuing resolution currently states, NHSBA supports that the state and federal government seek and provide viable, sustainable, permanent funding to provide a school breakfast and lunch at no cost to students.
So, and then they have an alternative one.
Yep.
Basically, they're, they're adding, and at no cost to local school districts, which I still totally agree with that.
Yes, because otherwise it would be at no cost to students, but at the cost of the districts.
Right, yeah. So I move that we agree with the alternative resolution.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the NHSBA recommendation? Aye.
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 For number 16? Nope, 17. Nope.
16, right?
Yep.
16, 16.
Okay, I'm getting confused by the double sided.
Right.
Okay, that's, there we go.
Yeah.
Um, number 17 is about schools as gun-free, uh, gun-free school zones. Oh, no, see, I'm confused again by the double sided.
So NHSBA is saying they have two resolutions relative to guns and firearms.
But they're saying they're not exactly the same. And then they did give an alternative resolution.
Yes.
And it does say allow the enforcement of federal gun-free school zone activity, I'm sure.
So that makes sense to me. The, the one submitted by the Congress School Board is quite long.
And this would, they already have two resolutions, so this would be like another, they're adding another resolution to cover the, the bit about this because they were worried about the school safety zone, which really isn't in the other two resolutions.
Right.
So I move that we agree with the alternative resolution recommended by NHSBA.
Second. Any further discussion?
But it sounded like the concern is that there's this law, but it's not enforced.
There's a federal law.
Yes, yes.
Federal and state law, so they, it's to make sure it's enforced.
Yes. Okay, all in favor of agreeing with the alternative resolution proposed by NHSBA for number 17? Aye. Any opposed? 18 submitted by Oyster River School Board. Sort of goes to what we were talking about earlier. That the state develop an equitable and sustainable tax plan dedicated solely to education for the purpose of fully funding constitutionally adequate education.
Let me talk about the court case where they lost, but it's, uh, doing.
Yes.
And the alternative is to use, uh, to add the language, public schools operated by local school districts.
Yes. Because otherwise that's confusing, I would say.
Okay, I, I move that we adopt the alternative resolution.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of adopting the alternative resolution recommended by NHSBA for number 18?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, number 19, also submitted by Oyster River School Board, is that the NHSBA not support the revisions to the state administrative rule ED 306, which otherwise is known as minimum standards. The NHSBA does not support this resolution.
Because on August 14th, the board did adopt minimum standards, so it's a good point.
Yes.
So that's probably kind of left discomplished.
But I think they're still asking you to, if you, if you agree with their position, it is to not recommend that.
I don't agree with the recommendation just because the rules, the minimum standard rules are still pending before J...
JELCAR.
JELCAR. Um, so to the extent the NHSBA wants to not support the provisions to, in Concorde, I would say, not to. So I don't agree that they should not adopt the resolution.
Your motion is to adopt the resolution submitted by Oyster River School Board.
Yes. I think, you're welcome.
Because they're basically saying, well, it's already happened, so too bad.
I disagree. It has not happened yet.
My second.
Okay. Because it also makes sense, even if they have them, at least it's a point going out there that...
We don't agree that you just should have, that you just lowered the minimum standards for schools. Hello, you should be...
Right. Okay, all in...
I'm sorry, to support the Oyster River?
Yes, yeah. Resolution, yes. All in favor of supporting the original resolution proposed by the Oyster River School Board? Aye. For 19. Uh, wow, Oyster River School Board, uh, really on a roll.
They are, yeah, they are. They want, they, they want a war.
For submitting the most resolutions.
No.
For school board, school board of the year.
Yeah, school board of the year, yeah.
Oh.
I didn't hear about that was a thing.
Yeah, I know. Don't make it a problem. I mean, what do I do? I went, I went into a presentation of what they have done and it's pretty amazing. Because it was like all the stuff that they've done. And they involved the, the way they really tried to, I mean, we could try, I'd want to try to do that, but it's, it's hard, like, of those people.
Yes.
Yeah, but they do an awful lot, like all their goal setting, which, maybe that would have been figured.
Okay.
Moving on.
Um, this is sort of similar to one of the other ones, from the first one maybe. Quite lengthy, um, about acceptance, equity, inclusion, anti-discrimination, et cetera. School Board Association recommends a change to, it's the same as number 13.
Right.
So just including, it's the language in...
Curricular, extracurricular, and co-curricular.
Yes, in the, in the other continuing resolution. Um, so I'll make a motion to accept the alternative resolution recommended by NHSBA for number 20.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Stay.
301. What is that one? 20.
21.
Okay, this is very confusing, okay. This is the Hookset School Board. To fund the cost of youth risk behavior survey for all middle school students. NHSBA does not recommend this resolution. It doesn't sound like this is a required survey and that schools can decide whether or not to take the survey. So having this as a resolution would be then to mandate that the survey be given. Am I reading this correctly?
Yes, right, they're, they're saying that if schools wish to administer the middle school version, that it should be...
Oh, you guys slipped one, just so you know.
I don't know about that.
Oh, I can't with the double sided. I'm very confused.
It's not what this is about, but we can, we can still finish this if you want. 21.
I think 22.
Well, what they did is they had hooked at 21, and it's the next page.
Yep.
So it looks like...
Sorry.
You want to go back? You want to go back?
Yeah, let's go back.
It's about school impact fees.
Yeah.
Twenty-one is the impact fees.
Okay. And this is on page fourteen.
Okay.
Correct?
Yes.
Correct. Um. School impact fees, this is recommended by New Hampshire School Board of Directors. I don't know if anyone feels very strongly about school impact fees.
Well, you get them.
Yes.
It pays for our gym floor.
It pays for the gym floor.
So it's, it's to try to update it so that they revisit their methodology, their policy, and schedule at least every five years, so I'm sure local ordinances will play a legislative role in changing.
Yeah.
So I'm not really sure why they're doing that.
I don't think it's required to.
Right.
It's, I think towns adopt, whether they have the tax fees or not, and then it just sits, so I think they're requiring them to revisit it.
There was some sort of issue where they were coming up with a master plan or something, and people didn't know about the impact fees, and then it became like sort of a mess, because it was a process, I think. I mean, this was locally, I don't know what Hookset's issue was, but.
That doesn't mean the adoption is recommended. I would, I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Now, we're onto the survey, right?
Yeah.
Number twenty-two.
Bearcat Valley.
Yep.
It's a skoma.
Oh, I thought it was Bearcat Valley. You're right, it is a skoma. Sorry.
Um, okay, now we're at the survey, the non-mandatory survey.
So they don't, the School Board Association does not think it should be another mandate from the state to administer, but if you want to use it and administer it, it should be up to them.
I think it's, I personally, I disagree with that, I think it's a good, that's really important information, just because the school must have planned out what to do to serve them. It's good to have this information statewide.
And if it was paid for.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, because if you go to this, and the vote is, yes, we want this, and then you say.
An unfunded mandate?
Yeah, and it's mandated, it's.
Yes, you can't force the state to mandate.
Right.
Pay it.
Yeah. So then, if you have voted to have this, then you have to do it.
It does, it currently, they do cover the cost for districts to survey the students.
For the high school.
So it has a change.
High school.
Oh, I see, and they want to do it for the.
Middle, middle.
There's a middle school version. That's not being allowed.
Or pay for the high school, but not for the student.
Well, it's just asking them to support legislation to require them to do it, and they not. It's not saying that you have to take the middle school survey.
Right.
This is just trying to get the state to pay for it, and also do it to middle schools.
Is it required for high schools?
Yes.
Well, you can, you can opt out, kids can opt out now, but we have to give it.
Don't you have to opt in? Don't you have to opt in to the service?
I don't know that they require that, youth risk behavior. I don't think they have to, I don't, I, I don't think so. All non-educational surveys have to have opt-in, but I don't think they do for that, for that percentage. Not sure. I don't know, I don't know, I'll SPA for you. Hey, administer.
For their rationale of, for not wanting to do that, that, um, it's just another mandate from the state, and they have to pass that to the public.
Yeah, I mean, and for districts like us, who have never, that we have not been mandated to do it, we would then have to do it.
I, I think we've done it, I remember doing it in the past, but. Okay, so what do you guys think?
I think, I think it's our real fault.
To support legislation that requires to fund it, which if they fund it, then it has to be done. So it is another state mandate, that they would have to do, that we're not trying to do.
I honestly don't know enough about the survey in terms of like if it does anything, or what happens with the results, or if it's actually.
It's impossible. There, each region has, um, a health network that you belong to. Concord is capital region, I'm not sure if you part capital region or not. Um, I'm sure Concord, Concord is going to administer that to this place of students, but it, um, talks about all risky behavior, it gives a lot of information, like how many, how many students have used marijuana in the past thirty days, you know, it's like, um, sexual activity, marijuana, vape, and, you know, alcohol, um, risky behavior for wearing seatbelts or not, it gives you a lot of data, um, and helps the regions focus on.
Suicide fog.
Suicide, iations. Yep. It's really good data, but it's not currently either required for middle school.
Well, I'm wondering middle school too, I don't know. Thank you.
There's, there's a surprising number of high school students who take, and are, take this and are honest, and the D is pretty consistent across the state, which tells you that they are.
Well, they're more mature than.
Well, I don't know, fourteen year olds have been created. There's that gap.
Um. I'm going to make a motion to accept the NHSBA recommendation to not adopt the resolution.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I mean, I'm sure it's great if some districts want to do it.
You can always do it voluntarily.
Right.
This is just getting paid for it, and, you know, doing mandates.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor of adopting the NHSBA recommendation to not approve the resolution?
Or actually, actually, wouldn't we be moving that we don't accept this resolution?
We're going. With nothing, their recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, I'm not stating it again.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Look at this.
Submitted. Submitted by the Keen School Board, um. Ooh, I love any resolution that says usurp. Uh, this is not recommended by the NHSBA, and it's to repeal all laws that usurp local control in regard to materials found in public school libraries. Um. NHSBA's rationale is that they already have two resolutions that speak to this situation, so they don't feel that another resolution is needed.
I ask for more specifics if you need the, um, School Board ones. So what we're talking about is what they have is quite long.
Right. Yes.
Yes.
Lots of usurping, though.
What?
Lots of usurping.
Yeah, they just say in regard to materials found in public school libraries, same thing about what it is, where if you think the other one, you're talking about the services, execulon, instruction, resources, library materials. So I would agree, I will move that we, um, do not. Do not vote for the resolution.
So we accept, we agree with.
The School Board's recommendation.
Yeah, okay. To not adopt the resolution.
Yep.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are you abstaining, or did you say, or?
I don't even think I'm on right page.
Okay, we're on page sixteen.
Yeah, sixteen.
Yep.
Down here, goes to seventeen. Because you're on number twenty-four, correct?
No, no, no.
That was twenty-three.
Right, it is weird how it's down to the bottom of that page, and you gotta look it over.
I'm sorry.
I'm trying to find out. I'm trying to make sure I got a, yeah, it's an easy thing.
Do you want to vote, or do you want to abstain?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. Okay, so now we're on number twenty-four. No, I'll be the vote, so it's at three, three, zero, one.
Zero, one.
Um, okay. Keen again. Is this our last one?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, submitted by Keen. Requires mandatory reporting by teachers and staff to parents and guardians of conversations teachers and staff, including counseling, therapy, school psychology have with a student regarding student's own status as a member of any protected class. The NHSBA supports alternative language. Um, which is to support legislation which prioritizes the well-being and safety of students, while recognizing the rights of parents to make decisions about their students, also gives due consideration and weight to educators' professional judgment and their responsibility under the Code of Ethics of giving up to educators to act in the student's best interests. So we can approve the proposed resolution or the alternative resolution.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, they're, they're trying to oppose state laws that require this.
Yes.
And the NHSBA is saying, well, under the Code of Ethics, it's already covered, but I'm not sure that it really is covered.
I think it's, I think the proposed recommendation is recognizes parental rights, but also empowers educators to give weight to the safety of children, in weighing whether or not to have those discussions, instead of having a blanket.
Yeah, but this has come out past, some people tried to pass bills that require mandatory reporting. Yes, I think this is trying to make sure that it's, it doesn't become a bill.
Right.
And that it's not as strong in the Code of Ethics. That's what I'm saying. Like currently, but then if they pass them, then it's, then they're not.
It's just a resolution to direct them to stop, you know, stop doing that.
Yeah.
Right. They can't stop it.
But I'm kind of leaning toward, I like, you know, saying, yeah, get rid of that, because it is true, I mean, it's hard, it's really hard to get teachers, and you start putting all kinds of pressures on them. And there's even talk of, um, you know, fines, and losing a license, and all that kind of stuff, I mean, it's pretty serious.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my reading of the alternative resolution is that that NHSBA would not support legislation that is levying fines because it doesn't offer a balance of parental rights and student safety. So I don't think if we go with the alternative resolution, we're not saying, hey, NHSBA support legislation where someone's going to get fined for not talking to a parent. They'll support legislation that, only support legislation that has discretion. Does anyone want to make a motion? Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the alternative resolution from the New Hampshire School Board Association Board of Directors. Do I have a second? Okay. No second. Someone else want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we adopt the proposed resolution.
Second. Okay, any other discussion? Okay. All in favor of adopting the proposed resolution number twenty-four?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, right. We did it. We did it, amazing. I don't think there's ETL here for board reports. Oh no, we missed high school planning.
Oh my goodness.
C, high school planning.
So, um, we're already starting to talk about, um, high school for students, and we need to decide, I, we wanted to get your input first, because you were very well through this last year, I don't know if you're ready to like hand it over to us to, now you figure all this out, um, we need to select a date to have students submit their choices for high school. Obviously, we want to ask now, because we need to prepare a budget, acknowledging that, I think there were two dates last year, there was a tell us what you think now, and then a final drop dead date, is that correct? That was it last year. Um, because we need to plug numbers into a budget, so.
So the first one was a Google form that just said that this is the school that we will likely commit to.
Yep.
And the second one was, right, sign the letter saying you are.
And you think that we need to do the two step again? I mean, I feel like we could have a baseline of the nu, same number of students who selected the schools last year, plug those in until we have actual numbers.
So I can send the Google form?
When did we have parents sign their choice, do you remember?
Yeah, it was like.
Early November.
Yeah, for the, for, uh, but the final thing wasn't until, I think, December, yeah.
Yeah. Um, I would like the final signed before the NBC gets our budget, because then we can't tweak numbers after we give it to them. And they're going to get it in December, so.
So the high school commitment letter was sent home on December eighth. Um, your child will officially be enrolled in the school, it will begin at this time transportation, your child's school records will all, are, make a choice, Cobrane, Concord, or Pembroke Academy, by December fifteenth it was due.
When did we do the tours at schools, was that this week?
No, we toured Concord and, um, Pembroke Academy.
Cobrane didn't.
Cobrane doesn't open house. And they're ready for that, they actually want that information by the eighteenth of October, I think they want families to let them know if they want to come in for. Yep. So, uh, we'll find, once we have the board's, um, information, we'll finalize plans on, at leadership on Friday, and guidance, um, we'll start working on getting the information out to families. And administration.
I think you're going to have to vote on the budget on December fourth, because the NBC wants it. Right?
Yep.
So we can go get on the chat decision by the end of November?
I would say middle of.
Middle of.
If we can.
We had, um.
Because there were, I recall people not submitting their form, and then the guidance counselors had to call them, harass them until they submitted the form.
We had forms, they rolled in from November seventeenth through like the twentieth, twenty-first.
Yeah.
So that.
And I think if we gave the parents information now that we're going to send this, you're going to be receiving a form to make your choice, and it's going to be due by whatever date.
Right.
Then they have time to.
I would say, I, I feel like we don't need the two steps.
Yep.
Because I think that was confusing for people last year, that they thought they already selected their school, and then they didn't formally do it, and it's a whole thing.
Um, the, the form said in order to plan for twenty-four, twenty-five, which reads change, um, budget, the Deerfield School Board would like to know your top two choices of high school.
I think we should just do one.
So just one, okay.
But do we even need to send out this form?
No, I think we just need to sign, send what, the form that we sent.
Oh, the commitment letter.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
But before, before that you're going to send information, which, you know, I don't mean send information about the high schools, these are two choices.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, a letter explaining.
Yeah, I would say like in the bridge, once we set a date for the letters going out, we should say, this letter is coming out whenever day. So to start thinking about high school.
Yeah, that'll be part of that professionally.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, um, probably have to schedule the tours, right?
Uh, yeah.
They're in the process of writing.
End of October, oh, yeah.
Tour, and then Concord usually comes out, we had an information night last year.
Yeah, I don't know if we need to do that.
It wasn't very well attended.
It was, I think it was like thirty, thirty people.
I think we.
Like fifteen families.
I think that was. Program study, there's lots of stuff on the website, that I think people are going to be more up to looking up.
I also feel like part of that was because at this point, we did not, we didn't have the contracts.
Yep.
Right, 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 right. We were still looking for input on what's, what are we doing for high school, so we hadn't decided
Right.
what path we were going down.
So I don't think we needed to be, you think?
No, I think as long as they go on a tour.
What about, um, November fifteenth?
They're due, or they're sending out?
Not due.
If they're due by the fifteenth, then we can have the numbers plugged in for your meeting on Wednesday. Twentieth.
Any stragglers we can give from the board?
Yes.
The eighth grade went to CHS and PA on October 25th last year. I just searched my Google Calendar. So that was October.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, we did both. Yeah, we did morning Concord and then they had lunch at PA. October 25th, 2024.
And then I'm pretty sure Cobrown has started off there.
So you want the.
Yes, they had theirs around.
You said their round is October 18th?
No, they want the, they want a commitment to come to an open house by October 18th. So we basically, hold on, let me.
Yeah, great.
So they.
I would hazard a guess that a lot of eighth graders already know where they're going.
Yeah, you know. There's been a lot of discussion. I would think that we've got to talk to you about it.
But I think it's still good for them.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Can our parents be able to go on the tours?
No. Well, the shadow way, so basically it's CBNA requests, "Dear parents, if you are interested in having your child shadow for a day at Cobrown," that's one thing. And then, and then they have, shadows for eighth graders run late September through December 20th.
They might have to be decided already. They can still shadow even if they've already chosen. They probably like it though.
You know, because we don't really lock, lock, lock them and do it until the start of the year.
No, we do.
We lock them in so when they're making that decision.
They can't change, they can't change because of the budget.
That would probably get some information.
Right, this is your final.
I mean, yeah, we did allow transfers, like for students that were at Concord because this is new and have that chance to choose Cobrown. They were able to apply to Cobrown.
But they didn't let anybody in eighth grade switch because that's something that numbers change.
But they did. I think we had the conversation, yeah.
But we probably need to be really clear this year.
Really, we need your choice.
That's a choice that we're budgeting for it. It's a choice for one year, not four years, but for one year. And you can switch at the end of the first year.
But you have to switch by November 15th of next year.
So do you have everything you need from the board?
I think so. I'm gonna, we're gonna put together a letter explaining the three choices and that a confirmation letter will come out in the next, in the next week or so. That will be due by November 15th and then I'll send the confirmation letter saying, "Your child will, please complete and sign this by, my child blank will attend the following school." And they check it off and, yep.
That's on the confirmation letter, isn't it? That they have to make this choice, the choices for a year.
I think we did that last year, but then things changed throughout. So it says, "Your child will officially be enrolled in the school. Will begin the registration process as soon as it's made available. Transportation will only be available to students who chose Concord High School. Your student's school records will automatically be forwarded to the school of choice. And once you make this choice, there will be no reassignments. This will be your child's school record for their high school career."
Which is not true. It's just one year, so that should be changed for one year.
Yep, I can.
Will be your student's assignment for the 24th.
For a high school year.
Do we, in there we have, the language in there says about the busing, but after next year, the busing is only good for two more years. So we make good on that?
Right, so kind of the board we have to talk about the busing.
Yeah. So do we leave that in the letter about the busing or do we preface it with currently only two more years left on the contract?
Well, that letter is going out when?
That letter is going to go out next year, two weeks.
Yeah.
I don't know that you're going to have enough kids at Cobrown next year to split the busing. I don't know if we're going to have enough busing. That's what I mean. Like, you know, if you, if you only have two buses, if you don't have enough of a split to send one to Concord and one to Cobrown.
Well.
And then you only get a freshman and sophomore.
My issue, I think, is less about one bus each, but one bus to each would also mean like a two-hour bus drive for every student regardless of where they're going.
Or you only have one or two stops.
Stops.
And parents have to get their kids there.
That's what they do a lot with high school kids. That's what they do with my kids. I have to get them like 100 miles away.
Yeah.
Yeah. We can talk about it. But do we want to include it in the letter?
We can take up the busing completely from the letter and have that be followed.
And especially get that out. Though I, I do wonder if that will be a question people have when they're reading this.
Yeah, you can, you can say that they, currently, the bus is only off from the Concord High School.
Yeah.
So you want me to, so what do you want, so your child will be officially enrolled in the school at this time, transportation will.
Is only provided to Concord.
To students who choose Concord High School, yep.
Should we put through the year?
No. It's, they can change it whenever they want.
The board.
They currently, bus transportation is only provided.
So we guaranteed those Concord kids?
No, that was the old.
So you guys were doing it on a good faith?
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, I don't think we could take it away from Concord, just see whether or not we're going to add it to Cobrown.
Yeah.
Do you want to see the letter that we draft with saying?
Oh, you can like.
Do it on Thursday.
Patty can look at it.
Okay, okay.
I do it, but I don't.
Well, yes, it's not, we don't care how we faith in you.
Exactly.
That's a nice way to put that, thank you.
Okay, anything else for high school planning?
No.
Awesome.
Okay.
No PTO update, I don't think.
I have a bunch of stuff, no, I have some stuff in my, my thing.
Got it. Perfect. Executive Board, I attended the last Executive Board meeting.
Oh, should we vote to make me an alternate?
Yes, because Kendra was not able to vote.
Can't vote.
Oh, I knew that Kendra nominated an alternate executive for.
I second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for doing that.
We will add that to the committee assignments, that you are an official alternate.
Perfect. No, I didn't, I shut up and I was like, she's at the table and in that conversation, but she can still vote. So we finalized the SAU budget, which has been posted on the school board Facebook page, the town website. There is a full school board meeting next Wednesday and we need a quorum of people from all the boards. So if you can make it, please do.
I can now, my time is mine.
Ashley will send out an RSC because we do need to make sure.
And I would encourage everyone to look at the SAU budget in advance. It is very confusing because there are multiple funds. Once you learn about the funds, it gets much simpler, but it is confusing when you look at it the first time. But if you have questions, you can let me know. I'm not your best source, but I can stumble through if you want, or you can talk to me.
Happy to answer questions, thank you.
And I think that's it from executive board. Principals report.
I think I handed everybody out the updated enrollment sheet. We have our BOY report. This is the October 1st numbers. It has not changed since the beginning of the year. We're still sitting at 507 and that includes preschool. We actually had, we lost, loss isn't the right word. We, a student withdrew, but we had a preschooler join us, so the numbers didn't end up changing. Soccer volleyball and cross-country teams are in full swing. Our volleyball team is undefeated and as far as we know, they are playing Portsmouth Christian Academy tomorrow and they are the other undefeated team.
Oh.
So it's a home game. Yep, so if you want to come, 4 o'clock, the girls would love to see you. Yes, it's here, it's home. Yep. It's fun, it's fun to watch them. Yeah, it really is.
I've been getting a lot of volleyball this year because Kirsten's.
Oh, okay, yeah. So you love the sport then?
Fun.
Or you've grown to love the sport?
I've grown to love it.
Fridays, so now we'll go, this is covering now September 5th through October 2nd. So Friday, September 6th, our fourth graders went on a field trip to Pawtucket Way. I'd like to thank the PTO and families that they provided a delicious coffee cart on Friday, the 13th, which the staff loved. We had a middle school community meeting on Monday, September 16th. Thank you to the parents and guardians who came out to learn about curriculum, procedures, and expectations important to our middle school program and students. The presentation link was emailed to all middle school families and is available on the DCS website. Wednesday, the September 18th, we had our first leadership. As you know, we have SAU leadership once a month and that was, the September kicked off for the 24, 25 school year, so all the principals and special ed coordinators, principals get together and talk about the, and things that we need to know about. On Thursday, the 19th, we had a mentor mentee meeting. Our mentor program has shifted a bit. In the past, we've hired a mentor facilitator, but our grant money has shrunk a little bit and we didn't have somebody to hire to be that mentor facilitator. Usually that person was here two days a week. So we brainstormed as an administration team and decided to put it out to the staff for, as a stipend position. So Mrs. Melissa Davis, our music teacher, is our mentor facilitator for this school year. She will, she's receiving a stipend from our Title I grant, or Title II grant. Title II grant, yeah. And we, so she helped organize the mentors with the mentees, which are our newest staff. We had four mentees this year and also will host a monthly meeting for mentors and mentees to get together and learn about a timely topic. September was about MLP and developing their individual development professional plans and all the work that goes into that. Friday, the 20th, was our first monthly all-school meeting. We, where the whole school gets together, the eighth graders hosted the meeting and I think it was, first of all, the fastest meeting so far. Usually they're a little under slash over an hour. By the time we get everybody in there and Mr. Green wants them to be a half an hour and done. And this one was a half an hour and done. Our eighth graders were very, very timely. They rocked it. And the kids host the whole thing. They, I meet with them for lunch during this, during the week leading up to it and then they have the microphones, they have their scripts and they run the whole thing. They choose the greeting and the activity that we do. This month's activity was singing a song about.
I heard all about the song.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. I had no idea what was going on, but she did, she was like, everyone was there and we learned a great song.
Uh-huh, it was, it was so fun. It was a student who was a Cub Scout for years and what was it, something about a caterpillar eating things and I had a caterpillar this big.
Caterpillar.
Yes. Good job. I would have, should have known you would know. The kids were great, they really, it was big and then I ate the whole school. And then I heard the word, this big. It was great, it was really fun. Then on Friday, also that's, that same day of all-school meeting, seventh grade did go on a field trip to Mount Major as a community building, exercise, team building exercise. On Thursday, the 26th, now we're a whole week ahead, we're now at the opening ceremonies of the Deerfield Fair and our DCS band and chorus went. We were very concerned about the rain, but it seemed to hold off a little bit. It did start raining pretty significantly while we were there and I had the wet pants to show for it. But that's okay, they enjoyed themselves and they were awesome. Our band and chorus is about 90 students this year, so, yeah, it really has grown significantly and the chorus did an awesome job. Our beginning band, yeah, we had two buses that brought us over and it was a wonderful morning. On September 30th, our Sunshine Committee hosted a craft afternoon led by Mrs. Erin Chase, who is one of our kindergarten teachers, and about 16 staff members, would you say, Lisa? About 16 staff members participated and they had a doormat that they censured and painted. So it was just a fun activity for our staff to get together. If you're looking for a fun word, craft afternoon is very fun. And just some upcoming information for you, the, this Friday is our Advisory Day and if you, I'm sure Ellen and Nancy, you remember Advisory Day, it's a day for our sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade advisories. They go on a field trip as a whole team and we've done it different ways. Sixth grade is already established in their advisories. Eighth grade magnets have already been established, but seventh grade doesn't announce their advisories until Advisory Day. So our sixth graders will be going to Beach Hill Farm. They have a great day over there with a hayride and they get a pumpkin or, I think they get pumpkins. And they bring them back and do some fun things back at school. Seventh grade is going to Butternut Farm.
Really?
Yeah, and, is it nice? Yeah, cool. And then our eighth grade advisories, as you know, are called magnets and they will be going to Hampton Beach for the day to do a beach cleanup and some other fun activities like a trash.
Recycle.
Recycle, sculpture, you know, winning a prize, the whole thing. So they've got it all planned out, so the kids are really excited. Advisory has, we worked, as you know, this summer advisory on advisory and our probation procedure and so it's off to a really strong start, which we're thrilled about. Also upcoming, our DCS band will be attending Concord High School's jump-off night. They have a band jump-off night at one of their high school football games and Mrs. Davis and Mr. Tronk always bring the band over to see like what it could be like. This is why we're in the band, because eventually you could be part of this band. So it's always a well-attended event. She'll have pizza the, prior to that and then they caravan over in cars to get to Concord High School. Monday, the 7th, is our fall sports picture day and Wednesday, the 9th, is picture day here at school, so make sure you bring your pretty smiles. And on Thursday, we'll have an author visit. As you know, Beth Masu, our school librarian or media specialist, she does the Read-a-thon and from the money that she collects from the Read-a-thon, she has brought in several famous authors. It's been wonderful. Jarrett Krosoczka, it's K-R-O-S-O-C-Z-K-A, so that Z really has my phonics skills.
He phonetically breaks it down on his website.
Oh, he does?
Yes.
So do you, Krosoczka?
I recall it.
Okay.
I looked at it.
Okay, I'll know for next time when I'm reporting.
That's all I can have, be up to this.
Friday, October 11th, is our professional day, so there's no school for students, but teachers will be here. We will be rolling out the staff survey that day. Part of, in the morning, we'll be doing a protocol around that, so I know the board is interested on how our surveys will be rolled out to staff and then from there, we are considering rolling out this, we'll roll out the student and the, and the family survey as well, but really focus in on the staff survey, pick some low-hanging fruits. Like I said, we have a protocol that we're going to use, so. And during that day, the PTO will be providing cider and donuts, so that's why I said I have some PTO updates in my, in my message here. Saturday is the PTO townwide yard sale that's not here at DCS this year, it's going to be all through the town. And then Monday, there's no school for Columbus slash Indigenous Peoples' Day. Also during the month of October, PTO is going to provide an apple bar towards the end of October. So that will be the PTO updates for you. They just have apples, sliced caramel, peanut butter, butter, yeah, the pizza. Well, I'll take a picture, you can come.
Yeah.
We might have to plan it when you come. Yes, I'll take a picture and you can plan it for the SAU office.
Our PTO is excellent.
Yeah, it's the best, the best, the best, the best. Yeah. That's all, thank you so much. Any questions? No?
First, the review board, did you go first? May 21st.
Hi. I have an update, you did it first. I was asked by Pembroke to bring information to you.
Yeah, they're only two of us at the last meeting.
Yeah, so they, yeah. They met last night, which is why they asked me to carry this forward to you. And given all the information that you shared last time, Pembroke made a motion that was approved to withdraw the applications for electric buses, but unless Deerfield felt strongly that they wanted to continue, Pembroke would be willing to consider that. But given, I mean, everything you reported.
Yeah, we can try and do the math and we can figure out, okay, you had your own bus drivers, how much would this be and how much would that be? There might be substantial savings, but that's huge and ever and we're just not really ready for this.
And we don't know where you would put the recharging, we don't know where you keep[1719.82] And we don't know where you would put the recharge and we don't know where you keep the buses. We'd have to hire bus drivers, we'd have to do the training.
They never worked with a school that didn't have their own buses already. Typically with a school that has their own buses and they'll pull a diesel bus and put an electric bus.
Exactly, right, right, so if we were in that situation, it would've been fantastic, but given that we don't have any of that infrastructure, so we...
There would be a huge upfront investment. Yeah, maybe we'd need multiple electrical panels installed at our houses, should have bus buses in.
The buses often live at people's houses.
Yes, that's true, that is true.
We didn't even consider that.
Yeah, that is true.
So I don't know if you want to make a motion, if you're...
I guess I will make a motion on that.
Second it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Did we say that this is a CRB meeting October 21st?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm listening.
Yeah, I got an email on it.
Okay, it is late, um, but we do have a whole lot of policies.
Well, Nate just sent me an, uh, so he was, uh, he had a chat circle with him. I mean, we didn't have any, we talked about it, we've been here for a long time.
We had no comments.
Yeah, nobody has asked anything or has given any comments, so we kind of feel like they're good to go.
I agree too.
I think Nate pointed out, the only one to me was JF, the high school grievance.
That is, you are correct.
Yeah, because we have not seen that.
Right, yeah, uh, well, Dean such it in, but he didn't realize that you opted to remove the top-off agreements, so the version that he edited had top-offs in it, so...
Okay.
That's on us to get that back to them, omit the J, that one, that's correct.
Was there another one?
Um, and then the first reading for home ed, um, here, we should be voting on it tonight, we added that one, that needs to be updated.
Yes, but was there one about, um, interacting with the police?
Oh, the, um, MOU.
Oh, yeah, we're waiting to hear about what we said.
Yes, we have, we said not, yes.
But which one is that?
Oh, yeah, what is that?
I don't know.
It was a J. Oh, maybe it got dropped off the agenda because it wasn't done.
Wasn't ripe.
Sorry, let me...
I just want to make sure that we don't move that one.
It was definitely a J policy, so, is that if we can find here?
Okay, that's fine.
Wasn't the student just going to do process?
No, it's not.
No, the student just went in due process, we handle here and with the G O B.
I'll make a note. To resurrect that policy.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we didn't, I don't think, move it.
Yeah, I don't think, I'm...
Okay. So I will move to, what are we approving about there?
They're all on the agenda, so you can adopt all the policies with the exception of...
In third reading.
Yes, JF.
Except JF.
Yes, so, so approve all that third reading ones.
Yes.
Except for JF.
Except for JF.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second.
Right, any discussion? Okay.
There's the new poll update that just came out.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? And then I will move, um, IHBG to second reading. I'll second.
Am I paying attention?
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay. Um, informational items, I did just want to share that there was the recount on the parent educators' contract. Um, it was a pass in any process.
Yeah.
Um, we all learned a lot, uh, so if anyone ever has questions about it, we sort of know what to do now.
Experts now.
Experts. Um, so there was multiple teams of people hand counting the ballots, that the, uh, contract did pass by three votes. So it is going forward, I assume all the paperwork is...
In process.
In process.
We're trying to get them done for the next table, so if they could get...
And there are five days for it to be appealed and it wasn't appealed.
Correct.
Yes, um, and then just the other informational item is the, again, all, full board meeting on the ninth...
You might have to text me or remind me.
I might, so there's my mind straight on. And then, so there's a meeting every week, or every Wednesday in October, except we have a bonus Wednesday and we have that one off, so...
Last Wednesday.
Yes. Uh, okay.
I have, um, I'm not sure if this is informational or not, but I received an email from, I don't know if anybody else might have, Harley Webb. And she, she said she's, can I read it?
Sure.
I'm a volunteer at the Church Street Promise Market, I have braces, I can talk. We are having a pop-up Christmas market on December 7th, I am contemplating the mitten tree for donations of mittens, gloves, scarves and hats. To do this successfully, I need a place to donate them after collection, do you know if there are families in the interim town such as, that donating to the school would be helpful? Or if you can connect me with the right person to discuss this with, or other ideas for donating them even, thanks, Harley Webb, so...
The woman that does the food bank, is she also here? Babe? Um, yeah, I was, I was wondering if it was more the welfare. Welfare. The welfare, for the town.
Yeah, because we usually do the, the stars on the tree.
Right.
And that's, that's two welfare companies, isn't it, for the...
Yes. No, no.
That's through the...
That's through, no.
Faith, Faith Barry?
I think that one is, it's more through the church, isn't it?
Yes.
Welfare, that was welfare too.
All right, that might be, let me direct her.
Yeah, I mean, I know Bonnie sometimes takes mittens and stuff to have in the health office, but I'm not sure how that would work through that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, because it's, the school's not open for people to come in at all.
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend having a drop-off box here.
No, I wouldn't, I didn't mean for a drop-off box, what if she was looking for, where to donate, I didn't, I guess like, oh, some, you know, I know Bonnie likes backups, for kids who forget stuff.
Yeah, there is like a, yeah, lots of things, but I wouldn't, no, I wouldn't put a drop-off box here, no, but, um, if there's...
I think that money's a little bit, don't you think?
Yeah, it probably is, yeah, just close to town, do it.
Okay. I'm sure Bonnie has a way of doing it, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Um, all right, public comments. Come on, let's go. No takers, so I will make a motion to go into non-public section, pursuant to NHRSA 91 dash A colon three, section two, letter C.
C?
C.
C. C is a cat.
Roco.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yes. I got you, Trey.
Oh, I don't actually think I got seconded.
Second.
A second. You call Roco.
And Roco?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.